Mic check for the YouTube stream. Mic check for the YouTube stream. Thank you. All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming today. My name is David Stinson. I'll be chairing today's Scarborough Committee of Adjustment hearing. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of zoning that apply to property matters, permissions to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, consent to sever property to create new lots, land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the indigenousland territory of the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anshabe, the Chipewa, the Huenashoni, and the Wendat, in addition to many more diverse First Nations, including Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit, Williams Treaty signed with multiple Mississaugas and Chipewa bands. Committee of Adjustment hearings are conducted by a hybrid in-person and remote-online formats. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person; others will participate online using WebEx platform. Meetings online are streamed at the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. Those who want to participate online, have registered in advance, will be connected to their electronic device, and you will have the option of participating by video or audio. You will be automatically muted upon online entry to WebEx, and when your item is called, you will be unmuted by the staff moderator. Please note, you must mute your device until you are called upon to speak. Those participating by video will be temporarily labelled as panelists with their item is called. During this time, your camera will be enabled, and you will be visible during your five minutes of speaking. At all other times, your video will be disabled as a designated attendee. For in-person and online participants, the Committee of Adjustment will share presentations submitted within the written submission deadline. Those participating by WebEx are not allowed to use share screen or other panelist controls, and will be removed if doing so. Receiving a copy of a decision of the committee, those in person who want to receive a copy of the decision by committee must fill out a decision request card, and those participating online must submit a written request for a decision by email. Please include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and Toronto Local Appeal Body, T-Lab, will be sending notification and appeal updates by email only. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local Appeal Body, T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal, O-L-T. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions, and only the applicant, Minister of Municipal Affairs, and Housing or specified persons and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions. Hearing procedure: I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda, except for consent deferral requests as determined by city staff. Making your submissions: where an application is uncontested, the agent applicant may proceed with their presentation. When the committee does not require a presentation, the agent applicant can advise me, the Chair, if they want to speak. The committee may ask questions and/or take matters into committee for their decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address this committee. Any presentation or materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing, as members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When speaking to committee, identify yourself as applicant agent, legal name, your address, and make remarks only to the application details. The applicant agent will proceed first and will make a presentation to this committee. The committee may decide to defer an application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate, and that all those entitled to notice of the application are informed of the changes. Speakers in support or opposed to applications will be invited by the committee to speak. Committee members may ask questions of speakers after their presentation. When the speakers are finished, the applicant agent can rebut only issues raised by speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will be taken into committee for a decision where the committee members will speak amongst themselves. Before hearing the first item, can I have a motion to confirm the minutes of the last meeting? Go ahead, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, sir. I move that the minutes of last meeting of July nine, twenty twenty-five be adopted as circulated.
As stated by Mr. Khan. Do I have somebody that will second that? Go ahead, Ms...
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'll second that motion.
Thank you very much, Ms. Olman. We have a motion by Mr. Khan to, sorry, to adopt the minutes of the last meeting, seconded by Ms. Olman. All those in very favor, motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Are there, no, this is directed to the Deputy Treasurer. Are there any declarations of interest by panel or staff regarding the agenda items?
Through the Chair, there are no declarations of interest from staff.
Okay. And I know this panel, I've already spoken, has nothing. Are there any files to be closed, sir?
Through the Chair, there are none.
Have you received a request for any deferrals?
Through the Chair, there are two for the morning session. The first one is item number three, ninety North Woodrow Boulevard, deferral at the request of the applicant in order to correctly identify all of the requested variances.
Okay. Just give me one moment. So this is item three, as you said, ninety North Woodrow Boulevard, and we have a request to defer this matter?
Through the Chair, that is correct.
All right. Do we have the applicant or agent with us? Or online?
Through the Chair, Rohan, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
I can, sir. Your first and last name and your position in this matter?
My name is Rohan Survig. I am the agent for, representing the owners' firm land for the property of four zero nine seven Lawrence Avenue.
Thank you very much. I understand you're requesting a deferral. Is that correct?
No, so that's what I was confused.
Through the Chair, this is, this is, this is not the correct applicant. It's the, it should be the applicant for item number three. Sorry, that's, that's, that's our mistake.
It's okay. Sir, we'll get back to you. Thank you.
Through the Chair, Dasso, you are unmuted.
Hi. Hello. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and the committee. My name is Yasuo Sommelingham. I'm the ultra-stake in on this application. There were, there's one item missed on the variance notice, so we would like to postpone the meeting so that we can send a full notice to all the public.
Very good, sir. Hold tight. Let me canvass this committee. Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Olman.
I believe there's a speaker. I'm not sure if the person's online or in-person. I don't have questions. I just wanted to mention that.
Okay. I've canvassed this panel. We have no questions for you, but we do have one speaker. Can I speak to the speaker, please?
Hello. Good morning.
First and last name and the address and your position in this, please?
My name is Tracy Chung. I reside at eighty-four North Woodrow. I'm just a neighbor down the street.
Thank you, Ms. Chung. I want to tell you right now that this committee is considering a deferral, the request of the applicant. The only thing I'm going to ask you to comment on at this point is, do you agree to approve or not approve the deferral request?
The deferral request is, I, I do, I, I'm okay with that. I approve that.
Thank you. That's a very wise answer. We're going to go back now to the applicant agent, and we'll speak to them for a moment.
Thank you.
We don't need to go back to the agent, do we? We, Dave, we don't need to go back to the agent? Yes, go to committee.
Okay. So we're in committee now. Do I have a motion to defer this matter? Does anybody have any? Go ahead, there.
No, you go.
Apparently, I'm going. All right. Through you, Mr. Chairman. I would move deferral of this application to the first available meeting date, and it would be the amended application that I'm deferring.
Thank you, Ms. Olman. This motion moved to defer this matter as amended. Do we have a seconder? Mr. Clay? You have to be vocal. Yeah, you have to be vocal here. Sorry. Okay. So you've seconded. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, committee.
So Deputy Treasurer, I believe we're at fourteen.
Through the Chair, yes. The, the last deferral request for the morning session is item number fourteen, fifty-four Inniswood Drive, deferral at the request of the applicant in order to address community planning concerns.
Thank you. I noticed that, yeah, we have no speakers, just a petition letter. So having said that, do we have the agent applicant available?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Edward Begai. I'm the applicant for fifty-four Inniswood Drive, and we're asking for a deferral. The reason of the deferral is that the owners wants to meet in person with our staff. They have requested that, and so we have to work on the issues that the staff raised during the process application.
Thank you, sir. Sit tight. We're going to, we're going to go into committee now and make a decision on this. Ms. McCauley, your light's on. Do you have anything to add?
I'm going to recommend deferral.
Okay. Go ahead, then. Lead the way.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I recommend deferral so that the applicant have the opportunity to discuss this application with staff.
Thank you very much. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. All those in favor? That is unanimous. The matter's deferred. Thank you, sir. I believe now we're going to return to the list proper, which will be item number one.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
We can. Your first and last name, your address, and your position in this matter, sir.
Good morning. My name is Rohan Survig. I'm a planner at Malongham Parsons. I'm here representing the owners' firm land for their property at four zero nine seven Lawrence Avenue, which is located at the southeast corner of Galway Road and Lawrence Avenue.
Thank you very much, sir. Obviously, we always make allowances for presentations, but before we do that, I'm just going to canvass this committee and see if they need a presentation. Are you okay with that?
Yep. I'm, I'm more than happy with that.
Thank you very much. Committee, does anyone need a presentation? Does anybody have any questions for, oh, Ms. McCauley, I'll have some questions. Please lead us in.
Thank you. We've seen this application before, and they're making very minor changes to the application. My question to the applicant is, is this going to be a condominium apartment building, or is this a rental apartment building?
So right now, the intent is to go back, to go to a rental building, given the market changes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I know this corner, and certainly more accommodation at this location would be good.
Yes. Yeah, we definitely understand that it's a, it's a corner, an area of the neighborhood that definitely needs a redevelopment, something like this. So we're trying to, we're trying our best to bring something that suits the neighborhood.
Thank you very much, Ms. McCauley. Mr. Clay, your light's on. Do you have a question, sir?
I do not.
Okay. I just wanted to check in with you. If we have no more questions or comments, I think we're going to go into committee. So, oh, sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Sorry. I'm actually here to, to speak on behalf of the, the neighbor and property owner. I did register in advance. We found out about the, obviously, the application later the owner did and contacted us. They own the adjacent daycare. So if, if I can give just a quick...
Sir, let's just look to the Deputy Treasurer. Any thoughts on this?
Through the Chair. So you're, you're representing the neighbor? Yeah, I am, yeah. Morgan Dundas with Sajeki Planning. Okay. And have you, have you registered as a speaker already? I have, yeah. I registered in advance. I think I registered on Monday or Tuesday. Sorry. Maybe for the record, yes. Yeah, that's fine. You could, for the record, I guess, can you state your name and address? I'm just, I'm doing the Chair's job here. No, that's fine. That's fine. Morgan, Morgan Dundas with Sajeki Planning, two-two-seven Pape Avenue.
And my apologies that we didn't know.
Oh, that's fine.
So glad to have you.
Yeah, of course.
And what would you like to tell us?
Yeah. So I'm here representing the, the adjacent landowner that owns an existing childcare center. The childcare center has existed in this neighborhood for twenty-five years. The daycare or the outdoor play space is located directly adjacent to this development. I do want to note that, you know, in, in the whole, let's just, if, if I'm looking at the development application in whole, we have no objections to the built form. We understand those were already approved through a zoning bylaw amendment application, site plan application, but we, we do seriously feel that there was a tension missed to this outdoor play space. I submitted a letter as well. Again, it was, it was late in the day yesterday, so obviously, I, I understand if you can't pull it up, or you know, you can't, you can't review it.
Sorry. What date did you submit the letter?
Yesterday.
Thank you.
Again, we found out about this, this late in advance. But I do just want to note, you know, looking at the site plan, there's been very little attention given to the outdoor play space itself in terms of safety of vehicle maneuvering. There's no bollards that exist. There's a little nub. If you can pull up the site plan, you can probably see it best. But there's a nub that sticks out of the drive aisle that's directly adjacent to the, the outdoor play space. You see that, the cutouts in that building there on the, the bottom, let's just call it the southwest corner? That's where the outdoor play space is, and it's directly adjacent to the drive aisle. So essentially, you have a nub where, where trucks can pull in and back into that space. There's no bollards proposed. There's no fencing proposed by the applicant. So we're just concerned that, you know, a truck could back into that fence, and that fence would ultimately fall on the outdoor play space, right? So I think it's, it's just a functionality. We're just, we're just trying to be realistic. We're trying to protect the children. And that's ultimately what our request would be, is that if the committee approved the application, they, they add a condition, you know, requesting either bollards or some kind of a, a safety device be installed where that, that nub is on the drive aisle. We just, again, we don't want, we don't want any vehicles backing into that space or anything like that.
Okay. Thank you very much. This committee takes very seriously the safety of its citizens, especially the most vulnerable, like children. So I think at this point, does any of the panelists have a question?
Yeah, Chair, if I could. So I appreciate it's late.
Sure.
Have you, or your client have any discussions with the applicant?
They...
That seems like a logical thing to have a discussion with.
Sure. Yeah, no, like, ultimately, again, and I'll be honest with you, our client found out about this very late. They contacted us very late. Hence, the late submission. Normally, we're on top of these things. We know that you've got your, your week, or your week-long submission deadline. So, no, ultimately, like, we haven't had time to reach out to the applicant or reach out to their team. And we were thinking that, again, just because of the, the request itself being added as a condition, we're just looking for some kind of a safety device constructed in that area. We keep it, we keep it very general. We're not, I'm not saying, you know, you, you re-engineer that whole space, but bollards or something like that seems like a very easy technical solution to ensure that you can still make a decision on this. Again, we're not against the built form of the proposal, but to ensure that you can make a decision on this, this can still move forward, but you can protect the safety of the children.
What's there now, sir? Do you know?
What's...
What's, is along the proper, the boundary line?
Oh, so it's, yeah, so I submitted some, some site photos, too. So it's an existing fence.
Okay.
But our client owns that fence. I do want to note that in their proposal, and I went through the, the site plan drawings that they have, I also went through the minor variance materials that they have, they do not propose to construct a fence. So they're intending to utilize my client's fence, and it's an old fence. Like, I've been out to the site. It's, it's not structurally sound in any way, really. So again, you know, I think we all want to protect children. I think that's, that's your mission as, as the committee as well. So that's, that's why, you know, we had this simple request. And again, safety measures or safety device, I'll leave that to the applicant to decide what they want to, what they want to construct. But, yeah, that's, those are just my thoughts. Hopefully, that was, that was short and concise.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? No. Let's now, you're going to have, sit tight, sir, in the audience there, and we're going to go back to the agent for the applicant. Are you there, sir?
Hi. Yep. Just got unmuted. I'm, I'm still here.
So I, I'm sure you've heard the discussion and the questions and the answers. What, what can you do to maybe help massage the concern here for child safety?
Yeah. So thank, thank you for those comments. I definitely appreciate it. So we are, luckily, we're still through, we're still going through the site plan approval process, so there is still opportunities to massage the site plan as, as the speaker was talking about. So there, there is room to do bollards or put another fence. So we can definitely take those concerns into consideration in our revised site plan package and, and make something work that I think appeases, appeases both landowners. I don't think there's any problem with that. I think there's, there's plenty of room to, to make something work.
Good. That's, that's very, very good of you. And also, it, it just obviously limits any more or any opposition to your application from the community. So well done. At this point, we're going to, oh, sorry, we got a question from Mr. Khan. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, sir. I have thirteen variances in front of me, and I'm also aware that this thing is under site plan control. Any variants under site plan, plan control?
Sorry. I'm, can you, can you clarify what you mean by, by that? What do you mean by...
When the things are under site plan control, they, they include items that this is not going to be according to the plan, or this is under control until it is resolved. So any of these thirteen variances being considered under site plan control?
So, I mean, after this variance application, hopefully, this variance application is approved, and we'll be able to resubmit, and we'll make adjustments to include some bollards or, or, or some other measure of protection. Changes will impact the variances we're seeking right now, so I don't see, foresee any other issues coming forward based on that. But these variances are being requested in relation to essentially the city's change position on mid-rise guidelines, and to add a gentle density to the site. And that's, that's half of the variances, and then half of the variances are related to a change in interpretation by the zoning examiner.
Okay.
I don't know if that answers your question, but if I, if I need to provide any more additional detail, I can.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any more questions, comments? Ms. McCauley?
I'd like to add a comment, and perhaps the Secretary Treasurer can answer this. This application still has to go through site plan control. They've submitted it, and access to a site often is an issue of site plan control. Can we add the concern of safety upon the east side of the property in terms of being adjacent to a daycare facility? Can we add that to something that we asked the site plan control application review?
Through the, through the Chair, you may wish to, because the site plan control application will, will review all, a lot of these technical issues, including transportation and safety. The committee could put in as a for the record that the applicant, the applicant explore installation of bollards as part of the concurrent site plan control application process, and it's for the record.
Okay.
Right? As opposed, because if you include it as a condition, then transportation, they may not, yeah. No one's going to be able to clear that condition, right?
No, I don't want to...
Transportation will already be reviewing that through the site plan application process.
I don't want to add it as a, as a condition, because if they're still going through site plan, there's a lot of steps before the site plan actually gets approved. So then, that driveway may not even be there by the time the site plan gets approved. So I just want to add a concern about that driveway adjacent to the daycare use.
Yes. These matters are typically dealt with, will be typically dealt with through the site plan process.
Yeah. And if I had, may I add some context? We're, we're, the site plan was submitted back in twenty nineteen, so we're, we're very close to finalizing it. We've been through multiple submissions. Um, so we're, we're very close to finalizing it, we've been through multiple submissions. So this, this, after this minor variance, uh, application, then tent is, hopefully this will be our last one. But we've, we've gone through it with transportation multiple times in another planning department, so we're, we're hoping the final throws.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCauley, thank you, sir. Okay, we're gonna go into committee now. Uh, sorry, sir, once you've spoken, that's it, uh, then he's allowed to rebut, but know this, we've heard the concern, and I think it's been addressed quite, quite fluidly. Um, we're now in committee, uh, go ahead, Ms., uh.
Omen.
Omen, thanks.
Um, okay, through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I thought that, um, you know, this application to me makes, uh, a lot of sense in the location that it's at. Um, they were approved already, um, for two-hundred-and-fifty-one units back on October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three. I also think that the agent, uh, provided us with a very good, um, cover letter that was quite detailed and explained that several of these variances are in fact technical variants, uh, variances. So, um, it may look like a lot of variances, but a lot of them, such as softscape, um, accessible parking, bicycle parking dimensions, those are all technical variances. So, um, if my colleagues don't have any other comments, I'm prepared to move motion, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so through you, I, I move approval of the application, and I would like to add for the record that, um, the agent applicant engaged in, uh, you know, safety mediation, things to deal with, um, protecting the safety of the kids in the daycare, such as bollards. Um, and that would be the only thing I would like added for the record.
Thank you, Ms. Omen. So we have a motion by Ms. Omen to approve this, uh, and an added addition of for the record, uh, in regards to safety features, including bollards. Do we have Ms. McCauley, would you like to?
I'll second that motion.
Second the motion, Ms. McCauley has seconded that motion, all those in favor? That is unanimous motion carried, thank you. All right, moving now to item two. One-oh-two Van Bru Avenue. Sorry, I say one-oh-two, sorry, one-oh-nine Van Bru Avenue to convert the existing garage into, in the rear yard of the property into a new one-story ancillary building slash garden suite. We have, um, five letters of objection, one registered speaker, is the speaker here today? There's two, thank you for that, hold tight. And we also have conditions of approval from Metrolinks and Urban Forestry. Do we have the agent applicant online, please?
Mr. Chair, my name is Nadeem Irfan, NIA architects. I'm the agent and applicant for this, uh, submission.
And for the record, sir, what's the address of your business?
It's Ten Millner Business Corp., Suite seven-ten Scarborough, Ontario, M-one-B-three-C-six.
Okay, very good. Uh, just hold tight, sir, I'm just gonna canvass this committee, see if anybody wishes a presentation or has any questions.
And Chair, I think we should have a presentation, we have a couple of people speaking in opposition.
Very good. Uh, we're gonna ask you for a brief presentation, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the proposal is to convert existing garage into a garden suite. Uh, it's a legal non-conforming structure, and, uh, a good candidate for the garden suite because it meets the criteria for EHA and as well as the, uh, fire department stringent, you know, requirements. These are very hard to find locations. Uh, the, the fire hydrant is in a very close proximity to the property and also provides an unobstructed one-meter, uh, width of the path of travel for the fire department. So if we look at that, we're not changing, we'll look at the proposal, we're not changing the exterior of the, uh, the building, we're not enlarging the building, we're not increasing the height, we're not changing the setback. All of these variances are existing, uh, conditions, and, and, and the structure has been there for almost thirty, forty years. So we, uh, see that opportunity and, uh, to convert, uh, this into a residential unit, which is the priority for the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Does anyone on the panel have a question for, go ahead, Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, sir. My question is, this is existing with, uh, four variances, and all four variances are not minor. They are, I mean, short of conforming the zoning bylaws. Now, hearing the agent, Mr. Irfan, that this is existing, and he's converting garage into a garden suite, it is a different phase of transformation from garage to, uh, garden suite. Now people will be living, and we have to see that, uh, this lot is not meeting the requirements of the zoning bylaws. Zoning, uh, number one variance is point-five-five, and requirement is one-five. South side is point-three-five, requirement is one-point-zero-five. North one, this is number three variance, two-point-seven, requirement is six-meter. It's bothering me, it's too short. Now, how do you justify that I should, I'm a little bit mixed up with the existing and, uh, transformation from garage to living quarters, uh, garden suite? So how do you justify I should be, um, convinced that we should allow you?
Thank you, Ms., uh, Mr. Khan. This is an existing structure, there's an active application with the City of Toronto for building permit, and the Building Code Examiner has reviewed this, and their, their comments are very minor. We have to look at these setbacks, why these setbacks are required, so we can have ample, um, windows, we can have ample doors. So if we were to look at the other side between the two houses, we have more than like thirty feet, uh, separation between the existing house, and we are proposing the windows there. Right now there is an existing window which is on the, the, the one of the side yard, which we are closing it, and on the front yard, which is two-point-five-seven existing, uh, if we were to look at, we are proposing the windows there. If we were to look at that, the separation from the front wall or the side yard wall to the street, it is more than six-meter. So it will comply with the Building Code requirement, and that's why I said it is a good candidate for conversion. Yes, the optics are different, you know, it's existing setback, uh, and it's short, that's why we are here at the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, can we have the speakers come on down? Thank you. You're allowed up to five minutes, you don't have to, you'll share, okay. Thank you for that. We'll need your first and last name and your address, please. Welcome. Okay, uh, we'll just get an adjustment done here for you. And please share with us your thoughts.
Okay, um, good morning. So we have submitted a letter of objection, uh, that is on file. I would like to reiterate pretty much what this gentleman said. The proposed variances are not minor. We're talking about sixty-three, sixty-seven, fifty-seven, and one-hundred percent, um, which are not minor variances. This fifty-year-old plus non-conforming garage has been protected by the grandfather clause until now. Grandfathered property rights do not apply to a legal non-conforming property looking to transition into a different non-conforming use. The new bylaws will apply, and any renovations or builds on the property will have to conform to the new code of the Planning Act. We will endeavor to have the grandfather clause revoked, so that the proposed garden suite will have to conform to the new code. Due to this, we are asking this committee to deny the variance request, thereby circumventing the applicant's ability to obtain the necessary permits needed to convert their garage to the rental garden suite. The second thing I want to mention is about our community and the changing demographics. According to the City of Toronto Neighborhood Profile data, the number of renter households in Cliffcrest is thirty-three percent, approximately. Our neighborhood is transitioning from being owner-occupied to investor-owned, and the fabric of our community is being torn. In general, investors and renters alike, in general, are not invested in our community, and they do not maintain or tend to the exterior grounds, and we've submitted a lot of pictures to show that. Too many rental units are degrading our neighborhood, making our area undesirable and unappealing, and we are concerned about our property values. As concerned longtime residents, we are looking to preserve the character of our neighborhood and restore a sense of community to our residents.
Okay, I'm not going to speak to the economic aspect, aspects of this application, but rather the human aspect and the impact of converting a garage to a garden suite. Building codes, bylaws, outs, offsets, setbacks are there for a reason. They represent the minimum, not the optimal, requirements. The primary reason for their existence is the safety and protection of human life from injury and death. We're still trying to comprehend the insanity of having a residential structure established directly beneath a massive tree. To us, it is clearly evident that the applicant is strictly based on economic reasons without any consideration for potential liability for themselves or us. During the ice storm of two thousand and thirteen, I stood outside my front door watching massive sections of trees in my immediate vicinity collapse into the street and into people's backyards. It was terrifying. I watched whole sections of treetops crashing to the ground below. We ourselves had a massive limb come down narrowly missing our house. Thank God for setbacks and offsets. Over the life of a tree, many events will happen, it is only a question of when, not if. A garage is not an inhabited structure, no one will be living in it during inclement weather, let alone be fast asleep for sixty-eight hours during a storm. A structure or a vehicle can be replaced, a human life cannot. Having a residence directly under a tree is tantamount to me booking a vacation to Ukraine or Gaza. It's not a question of will injury or loss of life occur, but a question of when. We would ask this committee to seriously consider the consequences of your decision and long-term ramifications, not only for the property owners, but most importantly, to any person living in the structure, as it will have lasting and severe impact on all parties involved legally, financially, and morally. We truly believe the applicants have not given this aspect proper consideration, and as such, we respectfully are asking you to decline the application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, is there something, you got forty seconds, was there something?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, the site plan that you provided to us in, in the mail, so we've already given you, um, two, um, discrepancies, I guess. They list two trees when there's one, their tree protections, uh, variance that they've given is not what it should be. And, uh, the thing that I neglected to mention in my letter is that they list that there's a driveway there. They say it's, um, um, asphalt. In fact, it's, I think it's.
It's dirt and gravel.
It's dirt and gravel, it has not been maintained in probably over ten years, it's mostly weeds. That's all.
Okay, hold, hold tight a minute. Does anyone on this, hold tight, wait a minute.
Okay.
Is anybody here, go ahead, Mr. Clay.
Thanks, Chair. Um, thank you very much for coming down, thank you for your comments. Uh, I just want to confirm your address, you are at four-forty-four A Alesworth?
No, no, we are at one-one-two Sharp.
Oh, you're right behind, I'm sorry.
Yes, our, our, our property.
It's our tree.
Our backyard is adjacent to the garage.
Okay, so.
It's our tree, it's a hundred and thirty.
You raised a bunch of concerns, and I, we appreciate that. Um, maybe I just sort of focus in a little bit on, what do you see as being the major direct negative impact of this on you? It's, they're not going up an extra story, they're just basically converting the existing garage. So what would you see as being the major impact on you?
Our letter that we submitted really outlines that for you, have you had a chance to review it?
I did, but I got the address.
Um, the big thing for us is liability. Um, as my husband said, the ice storm, it was, we lost a maple tree in that storm, and we suffered damage, as did, um, not one-oh-nine, but the address next, all because of limbs coming down from trees. So having a life in there that, you know, something happens, you know, it could cause us.
We would have a liability, as would the owners, as renters.
Because, and they're also.
Living in that structure.
Okay, I understand.
Presently, there's, I'd say that there's one or two limbs over that structure.
Big ones.
Wood, those limbs are at least a thousand pounds apiece.
And they're digging down, are they not? Are they not gonna hurt their?
Whether they are.
Well, I think from, we'll hear back from the applicant, but I think what they're doing is just simply converting the existing garage into accommodation, into a lane, so they're not going up, they're not expanding this way, they're not going down.
Just as an aside note, you may not be aware, we believe the applicants have already started adapting the structure for plumbing.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we have an inspector coming just, just to see, but, um, they've gone ahead, I think, and started, yeah, that's true. Um, so we do, we're concerned about the tree, um, and the damage to the tree, and we're concerned about our own personal li- liability. And we're also very concerned, um, as I said, about the neighborhood. This is not a landlord that looks after his property. Um, if you look at the pictures, those are supposed to be hedges, they're, they're up to the hydro lines. Um, like I said, the driveway, it's more weed than, than gravel, it's never been maintained. Um, we've had very questionable people living in there, they haven't been vetted properly, and sometimes we've actually feared for our security, we've had theft from, from his tenants, and the garbage, ugh, the garbage.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it, yeah. Thanks so much.
I'm to run on.
No, no, that's fine, I, I will make one comment also from this position I'm sitting in. I have an experienced background in arborist work and also tree liability. I will say, you are right, you are on the hook for liabilities, it's your tree. Um, what do you say about when it's your tree, you taking care of things that are that big, and, and pruning it and trimming it? Uh, have you given that any thought?
We do that regularly, like five years.
Okay, well, as long as you're aware of that, because it is your tree, as you said. Um, thank you very much for your presentation, as Mr. Clay said, uh, anyone else? Nope, okay. Um, let's go back now and hear, we're gonna hear back from the, uh, person who first spoke, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, through you. Most of these comments are related to the ba-, property standard by law officer. Definitely they can, you know, uh, monitor all these things, and we have a mechanism for all this. My question to, uh, the committee members for, in support of this application, let's say if we were, we are allowed to build a garden suite here, as of right, a setback of point-five-five or one-point-five-five, would these, uh, um, concerns go away? Probably not. We would not be sitting in front of the committee if we shift this existing structure to one-point-five and one-point-five, no issue, but the concerns are the same. So the tree, um, it's a healthy tree, we're not digging anything, we're not doing any excavation, we're not extending the property or the, or the, or the structure. So on top of it, we have a condition from the Urban Forestry. If the Urban Forestry does not give us a clearance, this, uh, this, this approval will become null and void. The setbacks are provided, like I said before, to have ample windows. We have an opportunity to put the windows on the, uh, exterior side yard and between the houses. So most of these variances are coming because of the existing structure, which has been there for thirty, forty years. It has demonstrated there's no negative impact onto any of the neighbors, and they were fine with that. Even with, by building this garden suite, there would never be any negative impact on any of the neighbors. And if a tree falls, if a tree is next to a house, it will fall, it has the same, you know, challenges. The tree is healthy, in its, in, in a healthy condition. If the neighbor continue to maintain it, there should not be any impact, and my client should not be, you know, uh, brought into a situation where, you know, this, this sort of situation occurs. So I, I request the committee to consider, this is a great candidate, like I said before, as of right, it can be converted, it is the setback issues, um, and, and it meets the requirements of the fire department because it's a very, very, uh, closely located with the fire, uh, fire, fire, fire high threat. So I request the committee to consider this for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you for letting the gentleman speak, so we're gonna move now, I think at this point, oh, Ms., oh, go ahead, go ahead, Ms. McCauley.
To go into committee, I'd like.
Yeah, okay, we're in committee now, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I looked at this application and the letters that you, uh, submitted. The, uh, garage, as I understand it, is, um, a legal, non-conforming, existing garage, maybe fifty years old, and what they want to do is take that, uh, garage and convert it to, uh, a garden suite. And what they want to do is take that garage and convert it to a garden suite. I would see no reason why they need to convert a garage that obviously is in poor condition, probably needs to be torn down, into a garden suite. Why not come forward with a garden suite, demolish the garage? That's ultimately what is going to happen with this garage. By the time they put in the services, by the time they, they repair the walls, by the time they put in the plumbing, you're going to be rebuilding this garage. I don't think that the committee should be approving an illegal building and a conversion into a garden suite with, when it's fairly clear that the illegal building will be demolished, even if it isn't converted. So I would recommend that we refuse this application, that the applicant go back, take a look at building a garden suite in compliance with the zoning. He's got a rear yard setback, he's got side yard setbacks, he's got eaves. All of these issues are because he wants to convert this garage that really should be torn down into a new building. If you're gonna build a new building, which is what we would hope you would build for a garden suite, build it in accordance with the rules. Don't try to convert an illegal, non-conforming garage.
Sorry, Ms. McCauley, just so I'm clear. Is there something in the paperwork that says that this is a teardown and then rebuild?
Yeah, that's what he, he's already said.
I thought it says to convert the existing.
Says to convert the existing by tearing down the existing.
Okay, I'm looking at the purpose of the application, not seeing the word teardown.
I'm looking at the, the comments here.
Thank you Chair, that's what Ann's saying, is that rather than converting it as, as the project is describing, that maybe it should be torn down and start from-
And that was my point of distinction. That is Ms. McCauley's comment. It's just not in the paperwork. And I wanted to make sure I was clear on that. So thank you.
And Mr. Chair.
And the question is, so where, is there something that says it's non-conforming?
Yes, maybe their letter that says, but I think the applicant also said, this is a 50-year-old garage. It's non-conforming.
Legal, non-conforming?
Legal, non-conforming.
I didn't get that in the material. That's why I was just asking.
Mr. Chair, I would draw your attention towards the purpose of the application. It is saying clearly here, property into a new one-story ancillary building garden suite, new.
Yeah, into new is not teardown necessarily. I'm not disputing that Ms. McCauley's right or wrong in her opinion, that that may be the eventual situation. I'm just saying what's in front of us on these pieces of paper says that it is a conversion, sorry, to convert. And the conversion means there's gonna be, my understanding with conversion, some part of this existing building. I think we're in the weeds here. Ms. McCauley, I do appreciate your comments and I thank Mr. Clay and I thank you, Mr. Khan. Do we, go ahead, Ms. Omen, of course.
I was just gonna make one comment. If this were legal, non-conforming, I believe that we would have documentation that would say that somewhere. You know, back in the day, the bylaws were different. The bylaws changed constantly, so things were built with different setbacks. But that doesn't mean that they necessarily have legal, non-conforming status, such as, for example, a variety store in the middle of a neighborhood, which would not be permitted now, but back then it was. So I just wanna, wanna throw that out there, that perhaps the wording used, the legal, non-conforming, but that in fact, things were built to different standards back then and different setbacks. So that's why all of these variances here are for existing conditions, but not necessarily because it was legal, non-conforming.
Thank you for, of course, that clarity.
Okay, but I'll put the, to you, that the, all the variances here are because of a change in use.
Well, it's, it's any time, it's not, like, if somebody comes in to do an addition, then any existing conditions are picked up. So this is kind of a standard thing, right, that happens? So if you're, if you're gonna put an addition on your house and your front yard setback, it's under an old standard, it's gonna pick that up as a variance. So in this case, that, he's here, he wanted to turn it into a garden suite. And yes, that's why it's picked up these variances as existing conditions.
Yeah, and, and I think the, the application says, it's convert the garage into a garden suite. But given the issues, in my opinion, he would be better, and the four variances required because of the existing location of the garage. If he wants to change the use from garage to garden suite and, in my opinion, tear down the garage and build the garden suite in accordance with the garden suite provisions.
Okay. So, thank you very much, Ms. McCauley, and thank you, Ms. Omen. Oh, Mr. Clay, go ahead.
Yeah, so, first of all, Ann, I appreciate your comments. I think Chair, maybe we can just focus on the variances before us. And I'm gonna be provocative and just proceed ahead. The variances that we have before us are frankly relatively minor. This is an existing structure that the application doesn't anticipate going any higher, going any wider, going any longer, is simply a conversion of use. I don't see any incremental impact on the neighborhood or on the neighbors. I appreciate the concerns that were raised by the neighbors, but I don't think that converting it will change any impact on the neighbors. I think the fact that urban forestry has put a condition into concern, recognize that there may be concern about the tree and if that's the case, then remediation efforts will be undertaken. But I think frankly, this is, I appreciate Ann's perspective. I think this is a supportable application. And I'm, to get things rolling, I'm happy to move a motion to approve, subject to forestry condition number two.
We then have a motion by Mr. Clay to approve this application with, of course, the conditions listed with MetroLinks and Urban Forestry.
Through the Chair, I just want to clarify, was, was Member Clay imposing the MetroLinks condition?
Oh, I missed the MetroLinks. Is it just a warning clause or is it a condition?
It's a condition.
Condition, pardon me, thank you, Paul.
Thank you Deputy Treasor.
With the MetroLinks condition.
Yeah, and we caught you. It's all good. And we do appreciate what we've heard from the speakers. We, I want to make one point here in the middle of this. We always take seriously what people say and we read weeks before we come here these files. So we're very familiar with what you sent in and we thank you. We've heard from Mr. Clay, we've got a motion. Ms. Omen, please.
I'm just gonna add, I'm very sympathetic to what the neighbors are saying, but I do agree with Mr. Clay. This is an existing structure and, you know, Ms. McCauley also brought up the point that, you know, it's been around for a long time. I mean, the garage door looks like it's, it's been replaced. You know, we're not builders, so we don't know if it's solid or not. But the, the, the application before us is just to do interior renovations to make it living space. And from that perspective, the structure is not gonna change. If it were moved to comply with the bylaw, there would still be the risk frankly of branches, that tree is massive, falling on the structure. And I am sympathetic about the worry of the neighbor for liability, but it, it would still be there if the setbacks complied. And so I, I will second the motion. The intent of the bylaws and the official plan.
Thank you, Ms. McCauley, I'm sorry, Ms. Omen. So the motion has been seconded by Ms. Omen. To a vote, all those in favor, that's three, to approve the application. And all those opposed, two, to oppose the application. The application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. New business, item, sorry, item three? Sorry, item four?
Mr. Chair, can we do four and five together?
Yes. For 46 is number four, item four, 46 Jevens Avenue. And number, item five is 48 Jevens Avenue. This is to construct a new two, a new two-story dwelling with a front porch and rear deck. The existing one-story dwelling that spans across this lot and the neighboring lot to the, to the north, in brackets, 48 Jevens Avenue, will be demolished. We have, with respect to item four, we have Urban Forestry recommending we refuse the application. And we also have conditions of approval by Urban Forestry and MetroLinks. With regards to item number five, also again, Urban Forestry is making a recommendation to refuse the application. And then the conditions of approval, Urban Forestry and MetroLinks again. So, but do we have the agent or applicant online?
Hi, it's Peter Juruzik from Ark Design Group, the agent for the projects.
Good morning, Mr. Juruzik. The committee, I'm just gonna canvass them. Does anyone wish a full presentation? Yes, we do. So, Mr. Juruzik, give us a presentation, please.
Yes, we have, what we have here is two existing legal lots of record with one house on it. So that's why there is no application for consent before you at the moment. This falls into, into the Scarborough Birchmount Park Employment Area District, not under the old bylaw, under the new bylaw. As you can take a look at the variances, we've tried to design a product here that respects the existing fabric of the neighborhood, the character of the community, and to minimize impacts of any new dwellings and keep within the bylaws. That's why the only required bylaws we need for the interior lot is for lot frontage and lot area. We've designed the bill, the, the building to comply with all the rest of the variants, requirements under that old bylaw. Secondly, the corner lot, as this is a corner lot here, we've respected all the requirements of the zoning bylaw, require frontage area, which is seven and a half meter frontage, requesting six meters, which there are six-meter lots already on that street. And in addition, because of the old bylaw requiring a three-meter flange yard setback, we want that revised to .48 as we do have a fairly large boulevard before we, to the curb there. So it's quite a large grassed area. From the asphalt road to the building will still be maintained. And this is very typical in a lot of the houses in that area, for even flange ones, to meet that type of setback as opposed to three meters. We feel that this, as they are very small, minor variances required, that we do meet the four tests. If you do look at the site plan, we are, because of the one corner lot, the one corner lot does have a large tree in front of it. But because it is a corner lot and the bylaw does request that driveways be from the flanking yard, we are maintaining the existing drive to respect the tree that's in the front of the property at .7 meters. It's a beautiful tree there. We're maintaining that tree and the existing, and all the others existing tree, and maintaining the existing driveway at the side. So that's why, when you look at this application in its entirety, I do believe it meets all the four tests. They are minor in nature. And though I know Urban Forestry has a concern, is recommending refusal, we are ready to move forward with this project. We think this is a good use of the property and will provide with, with all the conditions that Urban Forestry does have laid in, should the committee approve this.
Thank you. I will add, when you've spoken there, I appreciate your proceeding and want to proceed, but Urban Forestry rarely denies an application or asks that we refuse one. And I, I want you to know that that's taken very seriously here due to the nature of our canopy in this city and, and what we want to do with the trees, so. Is anybody else, go ahead, Mr. Clay.
Thanks Chair. So can, can you just describe, there's a tree in the front and there's a tree on the flanking side yard. Urban Forestry has recommended refusal for both your dwellings. Can you just explain to us what your intention is? You, you said that you were gonna preserve the tree.
Right, so the, the, the tree, as you see here on the, on the, on the, on the screen here, we have the one tree in the flange yard. It is about, it'll be about two to three meters away from the foundation of the proposed corner lot there. I can, I can quickly tell you, open up the survey and tell you what the, how close it is now. The existing house, currently the existing house is two and a half meters away and we're requesting approximately half a meter. So we'll be bringing that foundation wall half, two meters closer to it. Now, we do have an arborist report, an arborist report that has reviewed the trees and they have no concerns there with, with protection of the roots, doing hydrovacation, roots, root stimulation and protection of that, that they are in the opinion that they can be protected. So those two trees, though they follow, follow under, fall into the tree protection zones, we are, our intention is to mitigate the protection of those trees because they'll still be at least two meters away, two to three meters away from the property line, the one at the flange. And then the other one that's at the front yard as well, we'll maintain where it is. The one at the front yard, the issue is, is that the tree protection zone goes over the driveway a bit. So their concern might be the cars themselves. And we can look to work with the forestry department to, because the side yards are the same, I can discuss it with them to flip the driveway, to put it on the other side, to put it further. And I'm fine with that. As our, as our variances are only lot frontage and lot area, I can mirror the house and move the driveway to the other side, which pushes, pushes any, any asphalt further away from that tree protection zone of the .7 diameter tree at the front of the house.
Thank you, Mr. Juruzik. Mr. Clay, that answer?
It does, but we'll, I'll probably have some comments when we go into committee.
Very good. Oh, Ms. McCauley, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Other question to Mr. Jurassic. Sir, you're an experienced applicant. You've been here many times. You're experienced in dealing with tree preservation. I know a number of applications, I can remember one that you had where there was a tree to be reserved and we granted a deferral while you resolved the tree issue with Urban Forestry. And you had, in that case, to make a minor change to your drawings, but we resolved the issue. Why are we proceeding now with a negative report from Urban Forestry? Would you not be better in asking for a deferral? We still have the reports in front of us. And go and, and talk to Urban Forestry about how you propose to develop this property and preserve the tree.
Right, like the, the request for the tree is for the, is for the Norway maple on the one side there. That is, as they say, remove the healthy city-owned tree of the maple. That one is regarding the driveway size and location. As this is going before the committee right now, and there is no variances that affect the driveway or that, I can deal with the, with the forestry department to flip it because all we're asking for is lot area and lot frontage. So, and I did, I do see that they do have conditions here of that. I've dealt with forestry department after the fact, where they've asked us to flip houses that we've already had approved at committee, to better mitigate the trees, which we've had. We've actually jogged driveways around trees, following committee of adjustment when we're in the building permit process and the tree permit process. So though they do have this request and it's a driveway issue, that's why I already have the resolution to mitigate it. But to defer it, to mitigate it and, and ask that, their concern is, as it says here, it's the driveway size, which we can flip and ensure it's, and reduce it to three meters actually, because it's 3.2. We can flip it 3.2. And if, if they even request it further to, to jog it, we've done that in the past. I believe that's something that can be done because we still have to go through the tree permit process. And I've been through, through many of those where we've mirrored the houses during that process as opposed to the committee of adjustment. So in the essence of, of time and trying to get this approved, as we're just looking at lot frontage and lot area, the city, the forestry department does have other tools to still request changes. And I'm speaking before the committee here today, I do have solutions for that. I don't, and I think we do have opportunities to still resolve that with them and they have tools to deny tree protection and stuff like that as well. And they have tools to deny tree protection and stuff like that as well, for, for flipping. So that's why I just wanted to keep the process going, as deferral could add another two months to this project.
All right, I, I understand. You're, you're giving us the problem that, uh, we have a variance in front of us with an objection from, um, urban forestry. You tell me you can solve that objection, but I have nothing in front of me from urban forestry that solves it. And I'm not sure I want to approve this application, even though it, uh, the location of the tree is not affected by the variances, um, with their very strong comments to refuse the application. So, uh, I-
In light of that, then I would request a deferral, if that, if, to help the committee and to make sure there's no issues with forestry. I would rather than defer it and resolve it with forestry and come back with a clear, um, application. I have no issues with that. I think that is a better way. I'd rather have that happen with this solution than a denial, so. Uh, but I'll leave it up to the committee to make a decide, but I'm okay with a deferral if that's the issue.
Thank you very much. I think a deferral actually is a better solution here.
Thank you, Ms. McCauley. Uh, Mr. Druzyk, nobody doubts your word as a person. And also, many things can happen on the road to Damascus, as they say. So it's very wise of you to ask for that deferral, and we'll just have all the Ts crossed and Is dotted. We're going to go into committee now. Does anyone want to put forth a motion? Ms. McCauley?
Thank you. I will put forth a motion for item number four, forty-six Jevons, and item five, forty-eight Jevons, that the application is deferred, signee die.
Through the chair, um, I would suggest defer at the request of the applicant. And also, we do not-
Okay.
Signee die, just, just defer. Because it's, it's implied that when it's ready to come back, we will put it on the next available.
Okay. Uh, defer at the request of the applicant. Do you want me to add to resolve the issue with the tree?
Through the chair, you could just say to address urban forestry concerns.
Defer at the, defer at the request of the applicant to address urban forestry concerns. That's for items, uh, four, forty-six and forty-eight, item four and five.
A motion to defer by Ms. McCauley to the future. Do we have a second, or Mr. Khan?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Khan. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, new business. Item six, Eddie Glenn Watford Drive. Okay, we're going to get to you in a second, but thank you for identifying yourself. Well done. We have conditions from urban forestry. We have a letter of objection and a speaker, which I think is probably the same person before us in the audience. Do we have the agent or applicant online?
Hi, it's Peter Druzyk again, from Arc Design Group Development Services, Inc.
You're very busy today, Mr. Druzyk.
Three in a row, three in a row.
Okay, sir. Well, well done. So, uh, I guess because we have, uh, the letter of objection and the speaker here, I think we should have a brief presentation, as Mr. Clay said earlier. Uh, go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you, committee. Yes, when we look at this application here, uh, we have a corner lot to gain here, where, um, it's an existing lot, which we're tearing down the existing, uh, one-story bungalow. And my client wants, wishes to build a two-story dwelling on the prod, property, which they'll also include it as a duplex with a finished, um, basement apartment as well as is, is permitted now in the city of Toronto here areas. Now, um, when you review the, the, the actual variances themselves, due to a larger lot and the width of it and, uh, height restrict, um, requirements of, um, a height, we're asking for one, ten-point-one-eight increase in height to deal with the trust issues. When it becomes too flat, it just creates an awkward-looking lot. It would become more flat lot, a flat roof, which falls on another part of the zoning bylaw. In terms of the, the length, um, I know the require, the, it might look increased at thirty-point-three-three. And if, um, if there's a possibility to have the flange elevation put up, I could explain why it's thirty-point-three-three. The existing house being a corner lot, there is a section in the bylaw that says, when you have a corner lot, driveways should be on the flanking yard. Currently, our driveway is right at the corner. Uh, that's the front elevation. If you give me the side elevation or the flange elevation that shows the garage, that'd be appreciated. And instead of having the garage as a separate building, which is our right, my client wanted to have just a little bit of roof connection between the house and the garage. Adding that roof, and in the foundation, we've connected it as well, that makes the, the garage part of the house, which extends it now to the thirty, thirty-point-three-three meters in length, um, uh, for that variance there. That's why it is. Now, if we remove the roof and the foundation that connects the two, which is just, it just makes sense to connect the foundation, um, for, for forming, then the garage would have been accessory building, and we wouldn't have had that length. So, in light of that, though the variance looks large, it is just because the accessory building is connected by a roof. For aesthetics, it creates a nice curb appeal and creates a shelter between the kitchen and the garage when they want to go there, um, to the vehicle. So I believe this, this does fall within a minor variance in the four tests. And I believe it actually enhances the streetscape of that area to create that kind of, um, uh, open breezeway between the two. But it does push us to that thirty-point-three-three for that variance, unfortunately. And I'm fine to, to tie the site plan to the varying, to the committee of adjustment, should the committee decide to approve this, to ensure that it is only regarding that garage, why we want that length. And when we look at the, and I believe that that, uh, deals with most of the variances here. I believe we do meet the four tests here, and I think it is a, a, a nice project here that enhances it. Oh, sorry, the, the roof issue is at ten meters. I apologize, I forgot to correct it. Now that we have it on the screen, it's better to illustrate. We do have a ten-meter height, but when we have a skylight, they added us that point-one-eight for the skylight. And that's why we had to adjust the variances, to add that little bump on the skylight. That's why we were at ten meters for the flat roof, but the skylight bumped it up to ten-point-one-eight. And should the com, committee have any questions, I'm more willing to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Khan has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, sir. I would like to ask, uh, the applicant, that variance number three and number four, they are similar in nature. Sir, you are asking the length, building length as thirty-point-three-three meter, right?
Correct.
Requirement is, if the depth is forty meters and frontage is ten meter. The problem is, there is nowhere in the five variances you are asking or giving us the depth as forty meter and frontage as ten meter. Could you explain, uh, what is going on here?
So if I understand you correctly, Mr., um, look at the, here, notice here again. The du, um, nineteen meters is permitted. Nineteen-meter length, um, and nineteen-meter depth is permitted, okay, for a forty-foot lot. We're asking thirty-point-three-three. Now, the actual building itself is twen, the house itself is twenty-four. But because the garage is attached at the foundation, under below grade, and we have the roof over the, uh, between the garage and the house, they included the garage as part of the building length. If I removed that roof that ties the house to the garage, the garage would have been a separate accessory building, and we'd only be looking at the house variance of twenty-four meters. The reason why the house is twenty-four meters is as, for example, that previous application we had, many people bring the house closer to the flange yard. My client loves gardening and wants to maintain a nice, uh, streetscape, and we didn't ask for a side yard setback. They wanted the house pushed back. They did have a requirement for the square footage, so we've, we did lengthen it a little bit longer, uh, pulling it from the street, um, for that to not create a nicer streetscape on the property. And we're, I just, no, we're not asking for floor space index or coverage as well. So even though we're a little bit longer on the house, we have a large lot, so we, we do comply with all the coverages and floor space index as well.
Mr. Druzyk, you have gone around quite a bit, uh, in circles to justify thirty-point-three-three. But my question was very simple. Is the depth forty, forty meter and frontage ten meters? Yes or no?
No, it says if the lot has a depth of forty meters or greater. That's the survey. That's the lot. The lot is deeper than forty meters.
What is the frontage?
Uh, the frontage, um, sorry, let me pull up my survey here. The frontage is twelve-point-one-nine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. Go ahead, Ms. McCauley.
Okay, I, I'm now confused. I understand, uh, your length at thirty-point-three. So I don't have a problem with the length. I understand how you're designing this, so you've got a house, a breezeway, and a garage. In my experience, if we have a change in length, we usually also have a change in lot depth. But you're not asking for a lot depth. Why not?
I, in all honesty, and I just noticed this now because both words are there, I think number three and number four should be building length for one and building depth on the other. I think there's an issue in the, in the notice, and I didn't catch that before. I think, because they're, they're, they're repeating. I think they copy-pasted it, and one's for depth and one's for length. But yes, the wording says building length, building length.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because when I looked at the zoning notice, uh, yeah, I think, I think they just repeated the same thing twice.
Okay, are we going to-
Yeah, so I guess this has to be corrected then, if that's, if that's the issue here.
Yeah, and I guess we'll have to go, uh, through the Secretary of Treasury. Prefer, prefer to defer this to, uh, send out a new notice with the correct, uh, variances?
Through the, through the chair, um, I believe the, um, like, because the, um, because the notices aren't reflecting the correct variances, we will need to defer this. We apologize.
Okay, thank you, Ms.
But actually, just, just, actually, just, just to clarify, though, the zoning review, there, there is a, um, there is an, there was an error in the zoning review, which got transcribed to the, um, to the public hearing notice. We will resolve this, and we will try to, um, we, we will get this resolved. But, but under, under the Planning Act, we cannot, um, we cannot, because there's an error.
Okay, so I just want to explain to the speaker, thank you for showing up today, but we're going to defer this matter. I'll give you an opportunity. Are you okay with a deferral? We've made an error at our end. Okay, you're good with that. Go ahead, Ms. Holman.
Just a question of the Deputy Secretary of Treasury. Given the fact that this was, um, an error on our part, can, can, can it come back to the next agenda?
Yes, we, we, because, because there, because a zone, a new zoning review is required, I, I, I don't think we can, we can make it for the next agenda.
Thank you for that.
The, the earliest, the earliest will be, um, will be October. Unfortunately, is, if it, if it was, if it was, um, but because we have to confer with Toronto buildings on a correct, on a correction of the zoning review. And that needs to be sent to the applicant, and the applicant needs to send it to us, but, um.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right, so we're going to go into committee now. Um, Ms. McCauley, perhaps you could put forth a motion?
I'm going to put forth a motion. I guess it, it actually ends up being at the applicant's request to defer this application to, uh, seek, um, clarification of all the variances required, both, um, building length and building depth.
It would be just to defer, sorry, through the chair, just-
Just defer it?
To defer at the request of the, um, applicant to, to correctly identify all requested variances.
And do I have someone that will second that motion? Mr. Khan?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Ms. McCauley to defer this matter on an error by the Committee of Adjustment in City Hall. And we have it seconded by Mr. Khan. All those in favor? That's unanimous. We're going to defer this matter. I, I understand the speaker would like to talk to somebody. Will you speak to staff? Thank you, ma, appreciate it. We're going to go to new business now here at the committee. Okay, we're items seven and eight. Item seven is four-six-zero-nine B Kingston Road. Item eight is four-six-zero-nine A Kingston Road. On both items, we have community planning recommending refusal. On, uh, both items, we have a letter, one letter of objection for each. Do we have, we have no speakers here on this matter, no one in the audience. Do we have the agent or applicant online, please?
Yes, can you?
Yes, we can hear you. Can I have your first, last name, address, and your position in this matter?
Yes, uh, my name is Kim Chant, and, uh, we are from S and D Design Studio, and I'm speaking on behalf of the owner, uh, the, Raman Deep and Bint Burt, for, for this property.
Okay. Um, with respect to this matter, sir, you understand community planning is recommending refusal?
Yes, you, we received the, the email from the planning communities, and, uh, we are a bit, quite, rather quite baffled by the planning community's recommendations, because, uh, our under, understanding is that, you know, both the federal and the provincial government have encouraged intensification to address the housing crisis in urban area. And we believe that our increase of the rooming, uh, bedroom from six to ten are in line with their goal. And, uh, to us, you know, the planning community, uh, recommendation appear to be, uh, contrary to the intent of the federal and province, provincial push for intensification. So the current bylaw, five-six-nine dash two-zero-one-three, as amended for four plaques, has been approved citywide for more single-family detached lot, just like the one we have. So if we were to, uh, have a four plaques, right, which would easily exceed ten bedrooms in a single residential lot, right, with, with the height of ten meter, we can build a three-story. Let's say if you demolish the existing house and build a four plaques, we could easily have, uh, twelve to sixteen, uh, bedrooms. So, that's what the, uh, we are quite baffled with the, the, the recommendation, because there seems to be an inconsistency of approach between the provincial and municipal level in addressing the housing shortage. So, uh, our request for ten bedrooms from six, we believe is quite reasonable. I hope the committee would take into this, uh, into consideration. Thank you.
Just for the record, a point of house claiming, sir, uh, I don't think you gave your address after you gave your name. What is your business address?
Sorry, the, uh, our business address, yeah, is twenty-six, uh, Golden Fern.
Thank you very much. Golden Fern. Go ahead, sir.
Golden Fern Street in Markham, yeah.
In Mark, sorry, Golden, Golden Firm, forty-six Golden Firm, Markham, Ontario?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, um, yes, that, that's at the, I think the heart of this application is, you're, you know, allowable is six units. You want to increase it. It's, it is significant, ten. And you are correct, there is an interest by the province and the city for greater density. But this committee obviously is tasked with making sure, uh, it fits the four-test rule. I look to my right, I look to my left. Does anybody have any questions for this gentleman? I believe, sorry, and we have the letter of objection, but we don't have anybody else here. Uh, I'm concerned, I, I will make a comment. I'm concerned, uh, with the number of units. I know that, that is, uh, an area with great diversity, just down the way is Toronto Living. That has six units in it. We're essentially talking about a rooming house here, uh, when we get six and ten units. So it's not new to have multiple units in a dwelling on that street, but ten is significant, and I struggle to approve such an application. But those are my comments. Does anybody want to go into committee or make a comment? Go ahead, Ms. Omen.
I would tend to agree with you, and and I agree with planning. In the downtown core, you can have a lot more rooms, but in every other part of the city, it it's pretty much limited to six. And to the planning report's point, I mean, there's nothing else in the area. It's rare that we get applications for this many rooms, um, in in Scarborough. So I'm also reluctant to, uh, support this application.
Thank you, Ms. Omen. Really, I I'm not seeing any questions from committee, so go ahead, Mr. Clay. We're going to go now. We're there. Start us off.
Has the applicant had an opportunity to rebut?
We've made our comments, but he did not speak to them. Would you like to? Oh, we have a question from Ms. Omen.
All right, a question to the applicant. Do you have a license to operate a rooming house at this location?
Uh, yeah, we are, we are at the same time applying for the rooming house, uh, license, yes.
So you don't have the license yet?
Oh, no, yeah, we are, we are.
Are you applying for ten rooms?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So just to be clear, sir, your answer was a yeah, no. So you don't have the rooming house license, correct?
No, we, because of.
Sir, it's a yes or a no, please.
No, uh, we don't have it yet.
Thank you. End of, end of question. Thank you very much. Mr. Clay, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I.
Okay, uh, I look to Ms. Omen. Uh, sir, do you have any, actually, to the deputy treasurer's point now, I don't want to get ahead of myself. Do you have anything you'd like to say to us about our concerns?
Our, yeah, our, basically, yeah, I I know that the the, um, the panel, panelists and 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 they're, they're, they're having the same line of thought with the planning, uh, communities, but I still think that, let's say, if 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 I were to demolish this house and build a four plaques, right, I I could have four, four, twelve to sixteen bedrooms. So what, would would that, you know, go against with the planning intent?
So I I think that's a great point, and now I get clarity as to where you're coming from in this. That that really is germane to my mind and where you are putting the thrust of the application. They're two different animals here. This isn't what you just described. This is what it is. And we have the decision under our guidelines and protocols and city planning and the four test rule to decide if if it's appropriate. So if you're going to go that way, that's what you'll do. But right now, before us, is not that, and that's why we have a, we have, uh, for me, I'm not going to approve it.
Are we in committee, sir?
We're in committee, yeah.
I'll just make a call. I I I agree with you, Chair, and Nancy as well. I, um, uh, this is an application for an increase, uh, of almost a hundred percent of the number of rooms that is authorized under the bylaw. And frankly, if if this were to become, uh, a larger rooming home, then I think maybe going, uh, the route of getting a license first might be actually the best, uh, course of action. If you get a license, then I think it makes the path to get a variance, uh, a lot easier. But in the absence of that, um, it's hard to overlook what community planning is recommending in this instance. So, uh, I won't be supporting this application.
So I think we've heard from most, a percentage of us. Let's let's go and put forth a motion. Mr. Clay, would you like?
Sure, I'm happy. I'll I'll move a motion to refuse this application.
Mr. Clay's, uh, put forth a motion to refuse the application. Do I have a second, or? Ms. Omen?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'll second the motion, and this is for items seven and eight.
That is correct. That's applications that refused at this time. All those in favor? That's unanimous. The application is refused. Thank you for your time, sir.
Both, yeah. Sorry, my motion was for both, and thank you.
Yes, item seven and eight confirmed. I just want to let the audience know, we're going to probably take a break at eleven thirty, but at this point, we're on item nine, which is nineteen Massey Street. We have one letter of concern, no conditions or recommendations from various city departments, and this is an application to to construct a rear yard one-story addition sunroom to the existing two-story dwelling. And nobody here in the audience on this matter? No? Do we have the applicant or agent online?
Hello?
Hello, your first and last name, your address, and your position in the matter, sir?
Yeah, I'm Gurunathan Devarajan. Uh, I'm the agent, uh, the owner is just right here, Siva Kumathambyaya. My phone number is four one six eight nine two three.
No, 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 no phone numbers. We don't want you getting crank calls. Just give us an address, sir.
Ninety-six dash ten seventy-five Elsmere Road, Scarborough, Ontario, M one P five C three.
Thank you. And as agent, just, uh, credentials, are you an architect? Are you a planner?
Uh, I I I am an architect back home, but I am, I don't have my license, but I helped him, yeah.
That's useful to us, so you have a background in the industry. Thank you.
Yes, I am, I have the background.
Thank you. Just let me canvas committee.
I just have a question, Chair.
Go ahead, sir.
So looking at your photos, is this extension already constructed?
Yes.
Okay, Colin, this might be to, is this a permit or to legalize then? It's not really to construct.
So we are trying to legalize it, that's.
No, 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 just hang on a sec, sir. I'm just calling, uh.
If if it if it's existing, it should be to legalize. And we, what we will do is, um, in, as a technical amendment, we will, um, we will reflect this in the in the decision.
There's no order to comply, though, as far as we're aware, right? Just hang, just hang on a sec, sir.
Yeah, yeah, and this proposal is for.
Through the chair, there is none.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clay, for that excellent observation, and thank you, Chair, for the clarity. So we are dealing with, um, yeah, a technical amendment. Deputy, how do you want us to proceed on that? Just put it in when we're in committee?
Um, yes, through the chair, yes.
All right. Does anyone on this committee require a presentation or have questions? Mr. Khan, go ahead, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I have actually very brief questions on this one. It is already built. When was it built?
Yeah, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Did you discuss, uh, this, uh, construction with your neighbors?
No, no.
No. Okay, thank you.
Why didn't he consult with his neighbors? Why didn't he get permits? How did this happen, in short?
Because he wasn't aware of his name.
Hi, um, I'm Radharswari Ravindran. I'm also going to talk on in this matter. Uh, I prepared the drawings, actually, for for the for the committee. Our owner was aware that he needs to get a permit.
Okay, thank you for your clear and short answer. He was not aware of what the law required. Thank you. This committee, unless they have any questions or comments, we're going to go into committee. And we are now in committee. Go ahead, Ms. Omen. We're going to come out of committee. We have a question for one of the speakers.
Um, sir, I I know we don't have a speaker speaking, but we did have a letter of concern from the neighbors at twenty-two Plum Brook Crescent, and I'm not going to get into the content because I'm sure the owner is aware of it. So I would like to ask that you, um, that the owner actually talk to the neighbors and deal with some of the things he promised, um, in terms of the fence and trimming trees, et cetera.
Tree, trimming trees, yes, he has, he will do whatever he has to do, but the fence was, uh, built without his consultation, and, um.
Well, I guess that evens the score, right? Because, uh, your your friend there, he built, uh, the addition without consultation, so. I'm just saying, if they can have some discussions to resolve those issues.
Sure. He he, they can talk about it, but, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I am the person, while that fence was built, I went to the city's Scarborough Town Centre, and I asked them. They said that is, that is within her property. You are not, you don't need to pay anything. I confirmed with the city. Then only he didn't pay that money. I have, at Scarborough Civic Centre, Buildings Department, it's about a few years ago, ten years ago, this happened.
Okay, sir, I I don't need you to explain all the logistics, but I'll probably just put a for the record in there that you, um, do some consultation with the neighbor to resolve these issues, okay? All right?
He's not supposed to pay that, yeah.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Mr. Chair, so.
Remember, this is a technical amendment, too.
Uh, yeah, so on that note, if there's no other comments, then I would move approval of the application with the purpose, um, to read, to legalize instead of to build. And then I would like a for the record comment that the, um, the owner has agreed to, um, to speak with the neighbors to resolve the issues that are going on with respect to trimming the trees, the retaining wall, and the fence.
Thank you, Ms. Omen. Go ahead, Ms. Clay.
Friendly amendment, if I might suggest. Could we put in something also for the record that the committee does not condone, um, destruction of, um,
Without building, yeah.
Appropriate building permits?
Yeah, sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that would be great. Did you get all that?
The technical amendment is to legalize the existing rear yard one-story addition sunroom constructed without a building permit. This will be reflected in the notice of decision. The pa, actually, the the, um, the panel does not condone.
Construction without a.
Construction without a permit, without appropriate permits, okay.
And then you got the other one that the owner has agreed to engage in discussions with the neighbor to resolve the issues of the fence, the tree trimming, and whatever. Did you guys get all that?
We will get that.
Okay.
Don't worry, we'll get.
All right, so that's that's my motion, Mr. Chair.
And what a motion it is. Do we have someone that will second that motion? Mr. Clay?
I'll second that.
Move by Ms. Omen, uh, to approve, uh, with amendments and, uh, on the records, and seconded by Mr. Clay. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen, and make sure you get permits before you do anything. Thank you. That was a brief side there. We are now on item ten, one eleven Elsmere Road. There are conditions of approval from community planning, written correspondence, a letter of support, one petition, letters of support, twenty-two signatures. Just bring that up. My apologies. And this is, of course, to permit an outdoor patio in a parking lot. No speakers in the audience? Oh, we do have a speaker. Are you the agent applicant? You are the owner? Okay, that's the applicant to me, but owner works also. All right. Why don't you come on down here, sir? Give us your first and last name, your address, and we know your status now as the applicant owner.
My name is David Fisher. I am the owner of the establishment, and my address is eleven Gene Dempsey Gate, Scarborough, Ontario.
Very good. What's the name of the establishment?
Malone's Tavern.
Okay, wanted to get that on the record. Um, we can allow for a presentation. There is some letters of support, uh, of course, um, and there is conditions with community planning. Does anyone need a full presentation or have any questions?
Chair, just a question. So just looking at the photo, so again, is this already built, or was there a temporary one in there?
Uh, no, it's, it was built during COVID.
So.
And permitted during COVID.
It was permitted, and it's been in place ever since?
Yes.
So you're just now coming to?
To, for the minor variance because of the.
To continue it? Is it basically the same as what it's always been?
Exactly the same, yes.
Okay. Colin, again, does this need to be changed in terms of the project description? Is permit okay? Rather than construct, permit's probably fine because that implies that it's already in place.
I think so. Through the chair.
Okay, thanks. So it's been in place for?
Five years.
Five years, okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Clay. Go ahead, Ms. Omen.
Are you aware of the planning conditions?
No, I'm not.
Okay, so planning is recommending, um, privacy, privacy screening that will be installed and maintained along the east side of the patio, measuring at least one point eight meters in height. Operating hours will be restricted from eleven AM to eleven PM. There will be no outdoor music or amplified sound on the patio, and doors and windows to the establishment will not be left open or propped open while there's music or amplified sound in the interior.
That's, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, and just, Mr. Deputy Secretary of Treasury, just back to Mr. Clay's comment about the purpose. In in here, it says, under the application, to legalize and maintain an outdoor patio. So do you want to maybe change the purpose to that? I mean, it's in the planning report. That's the only reason I'm kind of throwing it out there.
If you, if you wish, we can.
I think it just, it'll be the same that way.
Okay.
Thanks, Ms. Omen. Go ahead, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, sir. Sir, my question is very simple. Is, my concern is the safety. It's a plaza, and, uh, is it built already, or?
Yes, the, it's built out of a product called Grip Block.
Because I have photo in front of me, it is showing that there is some foundation work done, but not completed. Is it completed?
Hundred percent completed.
Not hundred. Sir, my question is safety, and my concern is safety. And that is what you have to convince me that it is safe because it is tavern, and already I was briefed by our staff, and I agree with them, whatever that one is. Before approving, I want to listen from you that safety measure has been taken.
So the the wooden structure around the outside of his, a product called Grip Block, and that is the exact same company that the city of Toronto uses for all their outdoor patios.
Thank you.
And it's important to note, thank you, Mr. Khan, the city did approve this starting, uh, when it did during COVID, when you got the permit to go ahead, and I'm sure for insurance purposes and the Liquor Control Board of Ontario, this all meets their standards.
Yes.
Okay, that's good. Thank you for addressing that. I think we're going to go into committee now. Ms. McCauley?
Maybe just a question to staff. If this application was permitted during COVID and it's continued, why do we have the application in front of us?
Through the chair. It's it's based on the zoning bylaw that's, um, that's currently in place right now.
And so the zoning bylaw hasn't changed, but did COVID override the zoning bylaw?
That was a separate, through the chair, that was a separate process, right? It wasn't, it wasn't, that was a, that's a separate thing outside of Committee of Adjustment, separate program. The patio, the patio.
Okay, so the patio is a separate program outside of Committee of Adjustment. It went through COVID. COVID is hopefully over forever, and so now, in order to continue the patio, he needs variants. Is that basically what we're dealing with here?
That's correct. It's basically based on the current zoning bylaw, right?
Okay, thank you very much.
Good enough. And obviously, COVID presented a lot of challenges for business like this, uh, business, and and they expedited things. Now we're just ratifying it all, let's put it that way. Uh, go ahead, Ms. Omen.
Very quick question to the to the owner.
Very quick question to the to the owner. Were you ever given a timeline when you could have the, like, the patio? Was there an end date for it?
No.
Thanks.
Yeah, those were the times we lived in. Okay, we're in committee now. Go ahead, Ms. Omen.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I I think that this is a reasonable application. I mean, we have, I believe it's one variance before us, and with the planning conditions, I think that um this fits the four tests and it fits within the context of the neighborhood and there certainly aren't any, we don't have any documentation about complaints, so I think that this is an appropriate application, so I would move approval of it. Including just, including the planning conditions in the August fifth report and also to have the staff just readjust the purpose to say to legalize and maintain.
So on that note, Deputy Treasurer, does that have to be a tech? No, we've already addressed that, okay.
It is a technical amendment through the motion and we will reflect that in the in the decision.
Okay, very good. Who would like to second? Ms. McCauley?
I'll second that motion.
Move by Ms. Omen to approve with community planning conditions and the technical amendment for purpose, seconded by Ms. McCauley, all those in favor unanimously carried. Good day, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, item eleven. Three, two, two, four Danforth Avenue and in brackets, two Wainstead Avenue. To legalize and maintain the existing two-story detached ancillary building converted into a dwelling unit without an authorized building permit in the rear yard of the lot containing the existing two-story detached main building. And in this matter, we have community planning recommending a deferral of the application and, sorry, transportation review and conditions from Metrolinks. No speakers here on this matter? No. And do we have the agent or applicant on line?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Christian Chen, planner and agent for the applicant and my address is one five seven Adelaide Street, Toronto, Ontario.
Thank you, Mr. Chen, for that. I'm just gonna, I think in light of what we're seeing from community planning and of course the transportation review, I think a presentation is in order. You have up to five minutes, you don't have to use all that time, but please go ahead.
Absolutely, thank you, sir, and just like to advise the committee that this is definitely a case of caveat emptor, let the buyer beware, but in this case, I can also advise that my client was not aware of the unlawful lane suite that was constructed prior to his purchase of the property in two thousand and twenty-one, as the both the selling and the buying agents advised that everything was above board on this property and it wasn't until about, actually recently after the purchase, um, that my client was advised by Toronto Buildings that there was an order to comply on the property for the unlawful conversion of the ancillary um structure to a dwelling unit. This is even after despite searching online building permit records and status where you can in fact see online whether there's an OTC placed on a property and there was nothing there. There's also some timeline delays in getting a zoning review done because this is a lane suite in the CR zone, so a lot of back and forth with the zoning examiner to get the zoning notice properly. The zoning review setting the appropriate variances because it's a unique situation where in this case, a ancillary dwelling unit in the lane suite is not permitted in the CR zone. However, if I can ask staff to turn to page four of my P D of of the planning rationale's PDF, there is a nineteen sixty-two survey that shows how that ancillary structure has been existing for a long time on the property. So again, this two-story ancillary building had existed since nineteen twenty-two, that's when the building records show when the when the property was developed. This is a survey on your screen from nineteen sixty-two that shows that that structure was used as a garage. There is no exterior change proposed to the existing building. For almost twenty years, there's visual evidence on Google Street View that I've also provided in my rationale that the ancillary building had been used as a commercial space on the main floor and with living areas on the second story, this is since at least two thousand and seven. So all the encroachment variances that are before the committee today have been established prior to any zoning bylaw uh that was developed by the city or any current zoning regulations, namely five, six, nine, twenty thirteen. There's simply no change proposed to the structure other than to legalize the longstanding internal use of the ancillary structure as a rental dwelling unit. The building, the main building currently contains on the main floor a cafe. Upstairs, there are dwelling units and to the rear on the main floor, there are dwelling units, four rental dwelling units, some of them being affordable, and my client has converted one of the dwelling units to be an accessible unit as well. Also, there was a previous minor variance application to increase the height of the main building by two stories, which was refused in two thousand and seventeen, but in this case, we're not proposing any alterations to the main building, simply to legalize the use in the ancillary structure. So the current use of the ancillary structure is a two-bedroom rental dwelling unit of approximately eighty-eight meters square. It was improved in two thousand and seventeen, twenty eighteen by the previous owners. Also, the landscaping was upgraded between the two structures. I also, I've already went into the, my client being unaware of the non-compliance, but the, I I urge the committee to consider that the ancillary unit is currently tenanted and denial of the variances will result in dehousing the current tenant of the building and convert that ancillary structure back to a storage space. I did have discussions with community planning and I I'm dismayed that way past the eleventh hour, they provided their concerns, considering that this application has been in with the committee since at least May of this year, possibly earlier, and I am not exactly sure what would be served by a deferral. With this application to address planning's concerns, I believe that conditions could be applied should the committee decide to approve this to address their concerns, namely that encroachment agreement shall be entered to with the city and the encroachment agreement is specifically for that sill that's hanging over those two, what is shown in the image before you is as the eaves trough. And also to address transportation reviews, concerns with regarding the boulevard parking spaces, a condition could be applied that a boulevard parking agreement or permit must be applied to by transportation services and that no waste storage shall be placed on city boulevard. And to address transportation reviews comments regarding bike parking, this is respect to, with respect to variance four. I'm not suggesting that variance four be deleted from this, but a condition could be applied by the committee also to require that two bike parkings be placed on the site plan between the two buildings and of course, the Metrolinks condition.
Thank you, Mr. Chen, just because your time's expired. At this moment, that was informative. I have a couple of questions. When were these photos taken that you've supplied us?
These photos are included in the planning rationale and these are from Street View, so there's one photo.
No, no, the photographs, not not the Street View stuff, the stuff that somebody's taken with a camera and it's part of the package called Tree Photos, but it.
Oh, the Tree Photos.
It's not really.
Those Tree Photos, those Tree Photos were taken in honor before the time of submission to the committee of adjustment and I can just look at the records here when they were, when the application was submitted.
Okay, so this year?
The, yes, those Tree Photos are required to be current photos at the time of application.
And and my point is, thank you for that, my point is, in one of the photos, there's a fence been erected, it's a new pressure-treated sienna brown fence. When was that fence put up?
I'm not exactly sure when it was erected, but I would assume it would have been after, there's a photo from Street View from June of two thousand and nineteen that shows a fence under construction, so I would assume, sir, that that fence was either constructed or beginning to be constructed in June of two thousand and nineteen.
All right, well, we'll leave that, I'll park it. The other question I have is two thousand and twenty-one, I understand that the owner, applicant of this property purchased, purchased the property in and around two thousand and twenty-one?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And and on that note, if that is accurate, which you've confirmed, you said that they did some searching of the property, including Google. What did they do in terms of land title and the legal documents that most people would search through a lawyer or someone like yourself to buy a property?
Yes, so I've in fact pulled up the parcel register for the property and this was recently, just to, of course, when you're submitting a committee of adjustment application, you have to indicate the date of purchase of the property from the current owner. So pulled the parcel register and the parcel register does not show any, any agreements with the city or anything on title with respect to land titles. It was converted to land titles.
Sorry, sir, I think we're we're in the weeds here. Here's my question. What did the owner in twenty-one, twenty twenty-one do to confirm legally what this property was, besides look at Google?
Um, I wouldn't exactly know, sir.
That's the answer, let's leave it there. Yep, that's the answer, let's leave it there. Go ahead, Mr. Clay.
Thanks, Chair. Christian, you've, this is a good discussion. You've got me anyways, I can't speak for my colleagues, but you've got me at a bit of a disadvantage because we have a report before us that's recommending deferral, presumably to clarify and clean up some of the variances. You want to proceed and and have the committee attach what seems like a host of conditions, which I'm a little uncomfortable with in part because we wouldn't be necessarily sure we'd capture all the conditions and not too sure some of the things that we'd put in place would be able to be cleared. So you've indicated you want to proceed. The risk to you, I guess, is that if you want to proceed without a deferral, that the committee may actually refuse you. So if that's the case, are you in any way wanting to reconsider your interest in proceeding or would you recon, be 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 open to reconsidering the request for a deferral?
Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Clay. I have discussed this with a client and should the committee would like to proceed with caution and advises me to discuss this with community planning and transportation review to button up all the loose ends, then I I would be happy to change tack and should the committee decide to defer, then we will proceed that way.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Clay, go ahead, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, sir. Uh, I have heard my colleagues and I share some of the concern they have. My concern is that there are nineteen variances and very rightfully, the transportation services is asking for deferral as well, as well as, excuse me, as well as the staff is asking for the same thing. I will point out only a few variances which are justified in asking for the deferral of this application and the applicant would be kind enough to consider them. My concern is variance number six, number fifteen, sixteen and nineteen. Number six is the footage Danforth and ancillary building in the rear is not permitted. And number fifteen is separation between main building and the ancillary building. Sixteen, ancillary building used for accommodation, not allowed. Nineteen, parking spaces reduced to three, which is not acceptable. Now, these are my concerns. Would you be kind enough to address them, that how should we understand?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, thank you for the question, Mr. Khan. Yes, I can definitely appreciate the fact that on the face of it, once reading the public notice and the zoning review with respect to the number of variances, there are a lot of variances, however, in speaking to the impact of these variances, this structure has existed for a long time, at least since nineteen sixty-two, and the reason why those variances that you cited, sir, are triggered is because of the conversion of that ancillary structure to a dwelling unit. In terms of the physical form and the physical impact of this, there wouldn't be any, we've received no objections from the surrounding neighbors. This dwelling unit has existed since at least two thousand and seventeen, twenty eighteen without impact. So all the variances that are triggered are because of the conversion of that ancillary structure to a residential use. And of course, a lane suite is something that is outright not permitted in the CR zone, of course, it is permitted in the R zone. So if this was zoned as a R zone or residential zone lot, this is something of that of a land use that would be permitted and speaking to chapter three, you know, the housing, the housing policies in chapter three of the official plan is certainly something that, in my opinion, meets the general intended purpose of providing increased housing options and rental housing specifically here.
Mr. Mr. Chen, I'm gonna stop you right there. This committee holds no prejudice to your role in this, we understand you're you're actually carrying the the heavy, the heavy, doing the heavy lifting for this applicant. So at that point, I think going back to what was discussed earlier with committee and in particular, member Clay, I think we should look at a deferral so you can clean this up and that's what your job is and you're probably very good at it. So could, would you mind if we go into committee right now?
Absolutely, sir, thank you.
Okay, thanks. We're in committee, Mr. Clay, lead the way, please.
Sure, I think the discussion's been good, I think, you know, given what the agent has indicated that in discussions with this client that they would prefer to seek a deferral, I think that's a reasonable course of action to clean up the variances and to address any outstanding concerns from community planning, so I will move deferral this application.
Through through the chair, do you wish to also to address concerns of transportation review as well?
Thank you, Colin, yes, transfer, address the concerns of community planning and transportation, thank you.
Thank you all, Mr. Khan, go ahead.
I will second the motion.
Okay. Move by Mr. Clay to approve a deferral, seconded by Mr. Khan, all those in favor? That's unanimous, there'll be a deferral. Thank you again, Mr. Chen. Just checking in with committee members here, we're gonna take a break a little, a few more minutes. I've been asked to proceed. And we are now on. Oh, you do want to, okay, we are gonna take a break, sorry, folks. We are going to come back in fifteen minutes, thank you. The time now is eleven thirty-five. Thank you, folks, for the break. We are now at item twelve for Ben Lee Drive. Purpose of the application to convert the existing garage in the rear yard of the property and do a new one-story ancillary building garden suite. I will note that there is no recommendations, no conditions, no correspondence, and no speakers. Do we have the applicant or agent online, please?
Hello.
Hello. Can we have your first and last name, address, and your status in this matter?
I am Fernando Cameron at eleven hundred Kingston Road, Unit four thirteen in Toronto. I'm the designer and authorized agent for the property owners.
Very good, sir. Thank you for that clarity. Uh, before you give us a presentation, if we require one, let me canvass this committee. Does anyone desire a presentation or have any questions? Sir, due to the thoroughness of the package you've submitted to us and our prior review to sitting here today, we're prepared to go into committee on this matter. How, how do you feel about that?
Great.
Okay. Wise decision. We're now in committee. Please remain silent and I'll ask Ms. Olman to lead the way.
Um, through you, Mr. Chair. This application is one variance we have before us. Um, the impact, there is no impact at the back, um, to anybody. I think that this meets the four tests and I would move approval of the application without conditions.
Very good. No conditions. Moved by Ms. Olman. Ms. McCauley?
I will second that.
Seconded by Ms. McCauley. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Have a good day, sir. New business, item thirteen. Two four four eight dash two four five zero Kingston Road. I have no recommendations, no conditions, no correspondence, no speakers. And this application, pardon me. Oh, yes, to construct a new eight-story mixed-use apartment building with commercial uses at grade and forty-three residential units above. Okay. Do we have the applicant or agent here? No? Online?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
First, last name, um, your address, and of course, your status.
Uh, Finley McEwen, address five seven seven Kingston Road, Suite one zero four. I'm the applicant.
Very good, sir. Thank you for that clarity. Can you hold on a second? Does anyone wish a presentation or have any questions for this? Go ahead, Ms. McCauley.
I have a couple of questions, um, for the applicant here. Um, I don't need a presentation. He should be able to answer the questions very quickly. Uh, good morning, sir. I believe you're the applicant for this property and you were, are you also, or were you the applicant for a similar property just down the road on Kingston Road?
Yes.
Okay, good. Um, so, the one down the road came to Committee of Adjustment a number of years ago. I sat on the committee. We gave you approval. It's built. It looks good. So I want to, uh, make that statement that it looks good. I see that you are going to do, uh, something similar with this one. My questions really are, uh, is this going to be a condo, uh, as well?
No, it's rental.
Okay. All right. And then, uh, the section thirty-seven benefits are going to be deleted?
Yes, and, uh, if I may just comment on that, the zoning examiner did note the requirement for section thirty-seven CBC in the zoning review, but the planner, uh, in the letter clarified that in fact it doesn't apply to this property and in your decision, it would be helpful if you could acknowledge that. The property is clearly exempt. It's less than ten thousand square meters and we've had a heck of a time getting through site plan on this project. We're five years and counting and any assistance, uh, you could give us would be appreciated.
Okay. When I look at the variances required, um, I don't have any problem with the variances. And as I said, this is similar to a, a project down the road. Um, I'm hopeful that you proceed very quickly with this because what you've done, uh, on, on the other properties works out or looks to appear very good. And you're going to have to use, I guess, this property for, uh, some of the rental, uh, agreements. So, um...
In fact...
...to, expanding revisions to the rental housing agreement and adding three units. That's the variance that we have. And the OP has changed its, its policy in requiring a section thirty-seven benefits. So, um, I would recommend approval of this. It's minor. I don't think there's anything else to say.
And thank you, Ms. McCauley. Very clear and concise. Just to be clear for the record, and this is under the bureaucracy of what this committee has to operate under properly. We, we can't, uh, put on the record and discuss in terms of our approval or for the notes, section thirty-seven. So I, I understand that the applicant would like us to do that, but we're not going to do that. And that's my direct information from the Deputy Treasurer. That being said, um, we can certainly go forward as, uh, Ms. McCauley, I think, has indicated. Uh, Ms. McCauley, um, at this point, those were questions. We're not in committee. Anybody else have questions or observations? No. So let's go into committee and I look to Ms. McCauley to lead the way.
Okay. Um, thank you very much. Uh, a fair number of things have changed, uh, in the last five or six years and that has made some impact on this application. However, the, uh, variances that we have in front of us are essentially to add three new units, make some adjustments, and to recognize that, uh, whereas this was once condominium application, it's now going to be a rental and so some of the adjustments reflect that. There, uh, the application is minor and it's appropriate and I look forward to seeing it actually built.
Thank you, Ms. McCauley. Motion to approve the application. Um, do we have someone that will second it? Sorry, go ahead, Mr. Clay.
Oh, sorry. Um, yeah, I'll second it. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clay. Seconded by Mr. Clay. All those in favor? And motion unanimously carried. Thank you. Have a good day, sir. New business, item fourteen, fifty-four Inniswood Drive. Sorry. Yeah, item fourteen, fifty-four Inniswood Drive?
Through, through the Chair, that was deferred.
My apologies. I have that marked right there. Sorry. So we are moving to item fifteen. Item fifteen, fifty-five Lombardi Crescent. Purpose of the application is to alter the existing one-story dwelling to add a new enclosed front porch and side yard addition. I notice for this that there's no recommendations, conditions, correspondence, but I do see a speaker in front of us. Your first and last name?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. DeMarco, initials G. I act for the owners and for clarification to this committee. It's to maintain. This is built in... was built in 2020 during the COVID, so it's to legalize the side addition to the front. Again, built and started in May of 2020, and because of the COVID situation, it ceased.
Sir, just before you begin, we're going to start the clock, I got to ask a question.
I apologize, sorry.
No, no, don't, you did good. I just got to ask this question. I said to alter, you're saying it's not altered, it's to maintain?
It's to maintain, it's built.
Okay, I just want to check with the Deputy Treasurer.
Yes.
We're good with that? Okay, I just want to confirm that.
Yeah, I want to, it's very important to clear that it exists, so we're not building anything, we're not affecting the...
So to that point, before you do a presentation, does anybody need a presentation on this package? It appears, sir, that we're pretty happy with the package you presented, and it's been very detailed. Would you like us to go in committee and make a decision?
No.
You don't want us to make a decision?
I'll leave it, yes, give me a positive.
Okay, let us go into committee, I think there may be good things come of it. We're going to go into committee, let's see what happens. Oh, we have a question, go ahead, Mr. Khan.
Sir, thank you, Chair, now through you. Sir, my question is very simple. In the purpose of application, you're saying alteration, but at the end you're saying front porch and a side yard addition. You did not define side yard, which side?
The building, I don't know if you were out there, the building, these buildings constructed in six to three, there was five or six of them, what it did, it left a cavity to allow the entrance into the building. So what happened was, over the years, back in 2020, they blocked off that cavity to bring out the building square to the front. And I did speak to the neighbor to the affected south side, she has no issues, so I did canvas, but keep in mind, this is to maintain as built.
Very concise, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Khan is satisfied. Sir, we're going to go into committee now.
Go ahead.
Mr. Clay.
Thanks, Chair. This is, I think, a very straightforward and simple application. I think we understand what has happened. The front area has been basically enclosed, as done years ago. I don't think, looking around the neighborhood and the street, that this is out of character at all, it fits quite well, quite a reasonable application. It's unfortunate that it was done without a permit. These things do happen, but good that you're coming to us to get that resolved today. I'm happy to move approval of this application, because there really is no impact on the surrounding area. I would like to, as we often do, Colin, put a little for the record that the committee doesn't condone undertaking these works without the appropriate permits.
Yes.
Okay?
So we have a motion from Mr. Clay to approve this with, or notes, or on the record, sorry, that we don't condone coming to this committee after things are built, so please don't do that. And can I have somebody second the motion, Mr. Khan?
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Mr. Khan, all those in favor, and that's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members.
Okay, new business, item 16, 658 Pharmacy Avenue. Purpose of the application is to convert the existing two-story dwelling into a triple with interior alterations. There'll be a total of four dwelling units on the lot. Excuse me, we have correspondence, which are petition letter of support with three signatures, no conditions, no recommendations. I don't see any speakers here for that. Do we have the agent applicant online, please?
Yes.
First and last name, address, and position.
I'm Shivangi Prajapati from the CM Designers and Engineers. I am representing the client for the property at 658 Pharmacy Avenue, and I am the designer.
And sorry, did you give us your business address?
537th and Fourth Road.
Yeah, that's important, thank you, so we can identify everyone for the record down the road if we have to. At this point, I'm going to just canvas committee, does anybody need a presentation or have questions?
I just have a quick question.
Go ahead, Ms. Holman.
Are these two variances, are they existing conditions? Because it says you're doing interior alterations, so are these porches, platforms, and balcony, is it already there?
No, we are doing interior alteration.
Yeah, they are already there, right?
So they're already there, you're only doing stuff inside, so these are existing conditions, is what I'm asking you.
No, like we, the porch is not like a good condition, so we are building, renovating on the porch, and top of the porch, we are doing the balcony space.
Okay, so you're redoing the porch, and then you're doing a balcony above it, is that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holman. I will add that I don't think the numbers for me are out of whack with the request of variance, and also note that there has been no correspondence from city departments objecting to this. I look to Ms. McCauley, go ahead.
Through the chair, can you please add your...
My question was somewhat similar, is the front porch and platform also built? But added to that, is the garden suite also built?
Hello?
Hello?
Yes.
I'm asking you, I'm simply asking you, we're at the tail end of building this, rebuilding this entire development, and so you've said that the front porch and the platform, the front porch is getting some renovations, the platform on, above it will be, is new, hasn't been built yet. My question to you, is the garden suite also built?
Yeah, there is a garden suite also, he built, our application is ongoing with the city regarding the permit.
Okay, I'm not questioning that, I'm just trying to figure out how much has been built and what is in front of us. Very little is in front of us, simply a change to the front porch and a platform.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. McCauley, it was actually very useful to me. Okay, anybody? We're going to go into committee now. Would you like to lead us?
Yes, this is a really tiny application, very minor, at the tail end of a complete rebuild. So I, and I note there's also support letters from residents in the area. I recommend approval of this, I believe there's no conditions.
Correct, moved by Ms. McCauley to approve the application. Mr. Khan?
I'll second the motion.
And seconded by Mr. Khan, all those in favor? That's unanimous, and the application is approved. Good day, miss. Item 17, 171 Ellington Drive. Purpose of the application to construct a new two-story ancillary building garden suite in the rear yard of a lot containing an existing one-story detached main dwelling. There will be a total of two dwelling units on the lot. Conditions of approval, urban forestry, no recommendations, no correspondence, no speakers. Do we have the agent applicant online, please? Yeah, first and last name, address, and status.
My name is Nafi Zatangal Badi, address is 30 Apollard Path, Thornhill, and I'm the agent representing the owners.
Thank you, I have bad hearing, can you say your business address again, please?
Yes, 30 Apollard Path, Thornhill.
Thank you very much, the Thornhill is what I didn't hear. I think at this point, I'm going to canvas committee. Presentation questions from members? Go ahead, Ms. McCauley.
I don't have any questions, I want to make a comment, because I found this application confusing, and it took me a while to understand what the application is for, and why we have a variance here. Essentially, what they're proposing is a two-story garden suite. The garden suite actually is three floors, it's got a basement, two floors, but the garden suite, fourth floor area is 1794, I've done it in square feet here. The house is one story, and it has a basement.
Yes, correct.
But the basement also is not counted, and so the house is only 992 square feet. So the, the issue here is that the garden suite actually is bigger than the house, only because the garden suite is two stories and the house is only one. It's a, it's a confusing situation where we don't count the basements of either.
Yes, the reason that the number is, that's in the calculation, the number 166.6, is basement, main floor, and second floor of the garden suite altogether. But 92.22 is just the main floor of the building. So the part of the garden suite which is underground, main and second story, the footprint is complying, setback is complying, height is complying. The only reason for this variance is that the basement of garden suite is included in the calculation, whereas the basement of the main house is not included.
Yeah, okay, so it took me a while to figure this one out. I have no problems.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Holman, thank you.
Can you just, what is the square meters if you don't include the basement, do you know?
It's close to 100 square meter.
Surround 100?
Yeah.
And the house is 90-something, you said?
93.
92, okay, thank you.
Thank you, go ahead, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, sir. I have actually very brief question. Have you considered neighbors' privacy and number two? My concern is parking.
Yes, we have actually spoken to our neighbors, they're okay with that, and in terms of privacy, if they need trees to be, you know, down on the sides, they're okay with that. But we have spoken to them, and they're okay, they have no concern. And I didn't hear actually your next question?
Was parking.
Parking, parking is not required for a garden suite.
There are no parking requirements for garden suites.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you for your answer, the committee always encourages talking to your neighbors, excellent. Okay.
Yes, we've spoken to them, and they were okay.
Yes, well done. Okay, I think we're going to go into committee now, go ahead, Ms. Holman.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I think that this, this is a good application. In terms of privacy, there's a parking lot at the back, these lots are quite deep. Normally, we wouldn't like to see the house be smaller than the garden suite, but in this case, I think, given the fact that the basement, if you take out the basement calculation for the garden suite and just the two floors, it's pretty close to what the house is. I think she said the house was 93, and it's about 100. So it's very close. I think that this meets the four tests, and I would move approval of the application.
Thank you, Ms. Holman, go ahead, Mr. Khan.
I'll second the motion.
Motion to approve the application as set out by Ms. Holman, seconded by Mr. Khan.
I'm sorry, I forgot forestry number two.
With conditions of, forestry conditions number two, as the motion contained by Ms. Holman, seconded by Mr. Khan, all those in favor? And that's unanimously clarified and approved, thank you, miss.
Thank you.
Okay, we're at item 18, 55 Ridewyn Avenue. Purpose of the application is to construct a new two-story detached building duplex with a front porch, rear basement walkout, and rear deck. The basement foundation walls, the existing one-story detached dwelling will be maintained and reused. The remainder of the existing dwelling, first story, front porch, or rear deck, will be demolished, cross-reference previous minor variance application. I will also note for this file, we have conditions of approval of urban forestry, no correspondence, no recommendations, and no speakers. And sir, are you here for this matter?
Yes, I am, sir.
Are you the owner or applicant?
I'm neighbor. I helped, I helped my neighbor build the house.
Sorry, you're the neighbor, is that the owner up there?
That's the owner up there, yes, Mr. K.
Okay, that's good to know, we like to know who all the players are.
Okay.
What's your first and last name and address?
My first name is David De Souza, reside at 44B Ridewyn.
Okay, do you have a background in planning or architecture or engineering?
I've built plenty of homes.
Oh, very good, that's good for us again to know context.
Okay, I'm in the midst of building a fourplex right now in Danforth Road also, near completion.
Now, we appreciate your presence, but before we go forward, I just want to canvass this committee, because the package is very comprehensive. Does anybody need a presentation or have questions?
I have a question, Chair.
Mr. Clay, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. So, this has been previously approved, it's already built, right?
Yes, sir.
So again, Colin, we might want to just adjust the purpose. It says to construct a new two-story dwelling. It's already constructed, I don't know what we changed it to. So what, what are the additional, what additionally are you doing relative to what you were approving?
Oh, we're not doing anything. Basically, we've gone 3.6 inches too high.
Okay, that's what it is, so you just need a height variance.
Yeah, and unfortunately, at the time, I had radical cancer surgery, and I was down while the house was being framed, so I couldn't help Mr. Poon at the time. So basically, they added, the roof is, the actual roof is not too high, the parapet around the walls, the carpenter who I've used for years, basically double-plated the bottom plate?
Oh, I see.
And double-plated the top, so it gives us three inches.
Which is probably a good thing to do.
Yeah, so because of the wind and whatever else. So basically, what we did is, it's a flat roof, it's a 2% slope, but basically, it's a torched-down roof. So normally, what I do is I add a blue skin on top of that, that parapet, okay, and then torch the whole thing, and then cap it with heavy gauge aluminum. So that's why we're approximately 3, 3.5 or 3.6 inches too high on the parapet.
Right, but the overall roof, it's just the parapet, it's not the actual roof?
No, it's not the actual roof.
All right, that's very helpful, that clarifies that for us, thank you.
It's my mistake, but unfortunately, I was ill, and I...
No, I understand, it sounds like, had you been there, it probably wouldn't have happened.
Probably not, no, because actually, the one inspector there told the other inspector where I'm building now, check the guy's height, but when I started that one, I was very sick also.
Yeah, and your explanation about top and bottom plate.
We didn't catch it until the end, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, sir.
It's fine, and we're glad you're with us, and your health seems to be better. Mr. Khan, go ahead.
Not really, it's back, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, sir. It's just an observation that I am presenting to you, and you can help me out.
Sure.
In April 3, 2024, we gave you approval.
Yes.
And item number four at that time was rear existing wall height were 8.04, we approved. Now you're coming with the rear external wall height at 8.46.
Uh, no, yeah, 8.46, but I believe the prior approval, the...
Sir, is it the same wall that we approved in April on 3?
Yes, I believe so. The architect is not here because his father's ill in Europe, so that's why I'm stepping in.
Oh, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for the question.
I know there was a variance, I believe, of 8.35 on the existing, on the original Committee of Adjustment hearing, if I'm correct.
That is correct, actually, so well done. Okay, I think we're going to go into committee now. Mr., I'm going to ask Mr. Clay to lead us on this one.
Thanks, Chair. This was a very straightforward application, and I think the explanation from the agent as to why there's a very minor increase in the height over the previous approval, I understand, it's already constructed, so I think it's a supportable application as a result, has no incremental impact on the neighbors, on the street, on the streetscape. Colin, do we need to amend the purpose, or are we okay with the way it's written?
Well, there is no, there is no order to comply on this application, so I think, I don't really think it needs to be reflected as a technical amendment.
Okay, so we'll just leave it as is?
Correct.
Okay, so I'll just move approval of this application, subject to forestry condition number three.
Thank you, Mr. Clay, go ahead, Mr. Khan.
I'll second the motion.
Moved by Mr. Clay with urban forestry condition number three, seconded by Mr. Khan, all those in favor? And that's carried, congratulations, have a nice day.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
So I think that may be lunch, Deputy Treasurer, per your input. So we will adjourn for lunch? And what? 1:30. Thank you very much, everyone.